This meeting of the City of Socorro, City Council is set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats. Everyone, please silence all electronic equipments. No destructive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
La junta del concilio de las ciudades Socorro está por comenzar. Caballeros, por favor quitarse las cachuchas o sombreros y, por favor, de poner en silencio todo tipo de equipo electrónico. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso. A quien no siga estas reglas, le sacará y puede ser infraccionado.
It is 6:05 PM. This meeting is called to order. Item number two, Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence Led by Socorro Middle School Students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one nation indivisible.
We'd like to say thank you to the students with this certificate of student leadership. Would Mr. Peter Villa please come up? And Mr. Jordan Bidia. Item number three, Establishment of Quorum.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Here.
Alejandro Garcia is absent. Mayor Arby Avalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz.
Here.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Item number four, Public Comment.
We have two speakers for public comment. Our first speaker, Hector Ramos. Ferny Salcedo. Mr. Salcedo, you have three minutes.
Good evening, staff and commissioners. My name is Ferny Salcedo, resident of the City of Socorro. I have been for, oh gosh, all my life. Turning seventy this year, so it's been a while. I'd like to touch on a couple of subjects, beginning with the eighteen-wheelers that are being parked and left overnight on Farm Road Seventy-Six, as we all know, North Loop, and the ten-thousand, eleven-thousand, and up to the twelve-thousand block of North Loop. The problem started a couple of years back, and now it seems like they're doubling up. They're putting the trailers back-to-back, and they're leaving the trailers and hauling off the actual trucks. And they're leaving them through the weekend. My concern is with the safety. As we all know, the road is pretty busy, very hectic, and we don't need additional obstacles on the roadways to have accidents and contribute to having accidents. Not only do they have those, but on the twelve, I mean, eleven-thousand five hundred block, they've got those car haulers. They started out with one, like I said, a couple of years back, and now there are up to three on the weekends. Of course, Monday morning, they all hook on and set sail. But nonetheless, we need to be vigilant of that if we can monitor that and have the city help us out with that. It would be greatly appreciated from a safety perspective. Moving on, I would like to pursue, can we have any lobbyists attending TaxDOT and working with TaxDOT to help us along and move and speed things up? It looks like they were here two months ago. I attended the meeting, and we had some, we shared some very valuable information that I think is good for the community. But in talking to the engineer that came back to work for TaxDOT out of Houston, I asked him, what's the reality of this? What's the forecast? And he told me, quite honestly, says, Ferny, says that we're probably out nine to ten years out. So that's a long time to sit here and develop the City of Socorro. I'm asking that we be very, very careful with the improvements that we make or the ordinance changes that we have towards allowing and making ordinance changes to allow these larger vehicles into the residential areas. I feel like our streets are not built for those type of vehicles, and we can direct a route, perhaps, to accommodate them where they can leave their vehicles.
Mr. Salcedo, your time is up.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Thank you.
Moving on to Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion?
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia is absent. Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent.
Moving on to Regular Agenda, Public Hearing and Ordances. Item number thirteen, Public Hearing of an Ordinance for a Conditional Use Permit to Allow for a Motor Vehicle Maintenance Facility at 647 South Horizon Boulevard, Socorro, Texas. It is now six twelve PM. Public hearing is open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at six thirteen PM. Item fourteen, Second Reading and Adoption of an Ordinance for a Conditional Use Permit to Allow for a Motor Vehicle Maintenance Facility at 647 South Horizon Boulevard, Socorro, Texas. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
To...
How to discuss?
Discuss. Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Loreen Kimito, City Planner. The first case being presented today is on 647 South Horizon Boulevard. They are requesting a Conditional Use Permit. This Conditional Use Permit is to allow for a motor vehicle maintenance facility in commercial C-two general commercial zoning. The size of the property is forty-two thousand sixty-eight square feet. Again, it is on, at 647 South Horizon Boulevard. It is commercial, C-two, and planning and zoning staff recommends approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted for approval of the Conditional Use Permit to allow for motor vehicle maintenance facility with the condition to allow a maximum of five inoperable vehicles with the property intended for the repair and owned by customers only. This was approved at their April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting. The property is located just northeast of Horizon Boulevard and North Loop. Again, the property is C-two commercial. It has C-two commercial zoning to the east and west, residential zoning to the rear, and residential zoning across Horizon. These are pictures of the property from Horizon. There is the oil change, Lub express at the front and a mechanic shop in the rear. The aerial photograph shows the two buildings and the surrounding buildings as well. With that, staff can answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Reyes?
Do you know what they're using the lot for right now?
What is pretty much visible there, the front property is a Lub express and the rear property is a mechanic shop.
Okay.
Not by the same owner?
The property itself is one lot. It is one owner. The two businesses are operated by two different individuals.
Do you know how many auto mechanic shops there are on Horizon, on that section of Horizon?
I do not.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, were staff's recommendations on this?
Approval?
Approval.
Do we have any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, for the record, Mrs. Villalobos has joined the meeting at six sixteen.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia is absent. Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
We can't hear you. You're muted. We still can't hear you. Can you move closer? And see if that works? Yeah, but if we can't hear her, she's absent, and we still need her for the following, for the rest.
So do you want us to call her absent?
Yeah. For this item.
Okay.
Until, or until she, until we can hear her.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent.
Would you suggest that she turn off and restart her computer?
So it might be her connection because she emailed me letting me know I was waiting to load, so she might not be at full connection strength yet. She is using a mobile device, so that might be why.
Oh, I see. We still can't hear you. Can you try? You're muted again. Just keep trying. Okay, we're moving on.
Item number fifteen, Public Hearing of an Ordinance for the Proposed Amendment to the City of Socorro's Master Plan and Rezoning Lot of Lot Five, Block One, Clint Venture, Commercial Number Four, Lot Five, Block One, Clint Venture, Commercial Number Three, Lots Three and Four, Block One, Clint Venture, Commercial Number Three, located at two six two five, two six three five, and two six four five, Darrington Road, Socorro, Texas, from unclassified to C-two general commercial with the Conditional Use Permit to Allow for commercial truck and trailer parking. It is now six nineteen PM. Public hearing is now open.
Mr. Salcedo.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions to the unclassified C-two general commercial and then moving over to a commercial for trucks. I assume it says trailer parking. I assume it's eighteen-wheelers. Are we in a residential area? And the access to this, what is the route to get to this location? Is it located in a residential street and/or is it off of Socorro Road? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on this item? As there are no other speakers, public hearing is now closed at six twenty-one PM. Item number sixteen, Second Reading and Adoption of an Ordinance for the Proposed Amendment to the City of Socorro's Master Plan and Rezoning of Lot Five, Block One, Clint Venture, Commercial Number Four, Lot Five, Block One, Clint Venture, Commercial Number Three, Lots Three and Four, Block One, Clint Venture, Commercial Number Three, located at two six two five, two six three five, and two six four five, Darrington Road, Socorro, Texas, from unclassified to C-two general commercial with the Conditional Use Permit to Allow for commercial truck and trailer parking.
Thank you. The applicant in this request is asking the city council to consider rezoning their property from unclassified, which is basically a no zoning, to a C-two general commercial district, which would now give them an original zoning, with the Conditional Use Permit to Allow for commercial truck and trailer parking. As I mentioned previously, there is no zoning. There are parts of Socorro that were maybe annexed and not assigned zoning, so there are sections of the city that still remain unclassified, no zoning designation. This property is three point four zero seven acres. The addresses are two six two five, two six three five, two six four five, Darrington Road. They are currently, the note says vacant, but there are, there were truck tractors, vehicles there. The proposed land use again would be C-two, and the planning and zoning staff recommends approval. At their April eighteenth meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission voted for approval to rezone the property with the condition that the property owner remove all inoperable vehicles, trucks, from the lots, that the property is be maintained and cleaned of vehicle parts and overgrown weeds and grass. So the general location of this property is off of Darrington Road. It is northeast of Darrington Road and Gateway Boulevard east-west. So you just quite can't see it, but the freeway is just to the, to the west of this photograph or this map. Again, an area where a lot of these properties are unclassified and trying to reach them as they develop. This is a photograph of the property, viewing it from Darrington. Next slide. And an aerial photograph. This is the plat of survey for the property and the areas that the applicant would like to consider rezoned. Mr. Morales is the owner. He owns the, if you go back to the photograph with the zoning. He is the owner of the M-one zoning to the left of the red outlined property. He owns this and bringing that forward to have commercial truck parking and the C-two zoning because the M-one zoning is no longer available. With that, staff can answer any questions.
Mr. Cruz?
When, when staff is approving these types of items, do they also consider the master plan that the city has in place right now? Is that also viewed?
Yes, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, this part is not in the master plan.
Isn't the ETJ?
It was in the ETJ, but I don't believe the ETJ at the time was a part of the master plan.
Okay.
Which can be updated with our copy of the master plan.
Okay. And then also, I, it's very common that we approve these types of agenda items, but months later, the inoperable vehicles start to pile up. Who goes out there and how regularly do we go out there and check? We approved today. How long do they have to, till they can clean up and actually their permit kicks in? And, and now becomes valid. But it, it's something that's real common down here in our area. Because I don't know that we-
The burden on that is code enforcement, and so code enforcement is in charge of going around and, and maybe inspecting these properties, responding to complaints. Mr. Morales showed me photographs of the property. He's already started cleaning it up. I apologize that we didn't get them sooner to share with the council. And, but we can definitely enter them into the record after, if that's possible.
I guess what we'd like to see is, is the proactive approach and, and because the two departments are going to have to work together to make sure that this permit, you know, whether it gets approved or denied today, they have to work together at the end of the day for the permit to be valid. But at the same time, I think, I'd like to see a more proactive approach. I know the city's growing in, in that direction, especially in those areas that, that aren't as developed as these here. But it is real hard.
Ms. Lafferty?
Yes. And I just want to add that some of these cases do come forth because our code enforcement does catch violations, and that is the reason why they're here in front of you, to make sure that they're complying. Because as you notice, there's already a business that exists there. So that's probably the reason why they needed to rezon. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia is absent. Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
I could barely hear her.
Is absent.
Item number seventeen, public hearing of an ordinance for the conditional use permit to allow for a motor vehicle body shop at 10921 North Loop Drive. It is now 6:28 PM. Public hearing is now open.
Buenas tardes, mayor and consejeros. Muchas gracias por permitirme venir a visitar mi nombre es Héctor Ramos. El consejero Rudy Cruz tiene mucha razón respecto al mantenimiento de los talleres mecánicos. Si es bastante necesario que haya una buena vigilancia, principalmente por la cantidad de aceite que se tira en los mismos, que cuando vienen a lavar, porque aquí no hay lluvias, el aceite corre junto con el agua y si es muy importante mantenerlos, mantener cierto control sobre los daños que pueden ocasionarse. Gracias.
Gracias.
Are there any other speakers on this item?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to speak on this item as well. I drove by that, that location there. I, I do know that in years past, the location has a tendency to flood. It's got the two garage doors out front, and they've had a lot of issues with the flooding because of the footprint on, once again, North Loop and the runoff. The elevation to this shop sits probably about a foot lower than the roadway. I'm not opposed to it, however, it is right next to the residential area. And of course, against, once again, with the quality of air exposure to high volatile fumes, I'm not sure if it's going to be a, a paint shop or it calls for a vehicle body shop. So I'm just a little bit concerned for that. If you all take that into consideration and perhaps we can find out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
May I hear me? Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, I, just FYI, I took off my headphones.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other speakers on this item? As there are no other speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:31 PM. Item number eighteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the conditional use permit to allow for a motor vehicle body shop at 10921 North Loop Drive.
Thank you. This request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a motor vehicle body shop. The zoning is C2. It is point five four eight acres in size and currently being used as a, a body shop. Planning and zoning staff does recommend approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve the conditional use permit to allow for the motor vehicle body shop with the conditions that all the work be conducted within the enclosed building, that all inoperable vehicles be removed from the lot, and that no vehicles be parked on the public right-of-way. As, I apologize, I missed the last one. Permit. Would be to apply to 10921 North Loop Drive only. And that was approved on April the eighteenth. This is located off of North Loop, south of North Loop and Horizon. And this was a case that was brought to our attention by the code enforcement officers. They were issued a citation and came in to comply with their, and to comply by requesting the conditional use permit. These are pictures of the property. The one on the top is from Horizon and, and the one on the bottom is from the rear street, which is Lydia Drive. Here is an aerial photograph. There are two, two properties on the, on the lot. And with that, staff can answer any questions.
Mr. Cruz?
Ms. Quimido, the, the current structure is being utilized currently as a body shop right now?
Yes.
Does staff know if it's, if it's currently outfitted with the proper ventilation system for something like this? The reason I'm asking is because I don't feel comfortable approving something like this and putting people, people's health at risk, especially the workers that are going to be working there. That's why I ask if it's currently outfitted with the proper ventilation system. I know body shops, there are certain requirements or something like that, dependent on the type of work that they're doing. So when you say body shop, I'm automatically assuming there's going to be bodywork, sanding, fiberglass, paint, fumes.
Yes, so currently it is not set up that way. That's why we're asking for the permit. Before the permit is released, they need to meet all the criteria that the code requires for a body shop, for a paint shop.
So, and again, I, I feel like we're putting the, the, the cart, the cart before the horse. So say, say, say they don't have the funding to outfit it or, or they don't meet the criteria requirements, does it get brought back here and it gets the client?
The permit doesn't get issued.
It doesn't get issued?
Correct.
Okay.
So in order for us to issue a permit, they have to meet all the criteria. Right now, they're working illegally. That's why we're here. Once the conditional use permit is approved, then we work with them, but we don't issue out the permit until they're in compliance.
Got it, okay, understood.
Any other questions?
No, I got my answer.
Do we have a motion?
I do have a question. If I may. So citations were issued based on not having what's-
There were parks in, there were cars parked in the right-of-way, which led code enforcement to investigate and realize that, and come to the conclusion that they didn't have the proper-
The permit. Okay. All right. Motion to approve. With the condition that they comply with requirements.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia is absent. Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, public hearing of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Boards, Commissions, Agencies and Authorities, Division Three Board of Adjustments, Section Two-Dash-Seven-Forteen Authority, Jurisdiction and Quorum. It is now 6:36 PM. Public hearing is open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:37 PM. Item number twenty, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Boards, Commissions, Agencies and Authorities, Division Three Board of Adjustments, Section Two-Dash-Seven-Forteen Authority, Jurisdiction and Quorum.
Good evening, council. This is a continuation of an item I brought to you last, last month. In my excitement to move it on forward to you all, I did not make all of the necessary edits. I changed, we changed the number of members, but I neglected to change the number of votes. So kind of just following through, making that complete and coherent.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia is absent. Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to grants department. Item number twenty-one, discussion and action to approve seven fifty resolutions supporting the city of Socorro's applications to the Texas Department of Transportation's twenty twenty-three transportation alternatives set aside TA call for projects. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Alejandro Balde, City Development Director. We are requesting your approval to submit a resolution for our FY twenty-three transportation alternative grant applications. The city of Socorro is submitting three grant applications to this call for projects. The transportation alternatives program can support preliminary engineering costs, including plans, estimates and environmental documentation, as well as construction. There are transportation development credits that are, are available to cover the match required from the local government. So we will be requesting transportation development credits from Techstat to cover Socorro's match. The three projects and the details are included in your backup are the Paso Norte Trail Socorro Active Transportation Network. This is approximately eight miles of trails, facilities connecting to transit, historic sites and small businesses on Socorro Road. The second project is the Socorro Citywide Sidewalks Improvements. That's approximately forty-five miles of sidewalks throughout the city of Socorro as a continuation project to our previous Safe Rusty School project. So this will provide a safe and connected route for, for kids to get to local schools. The third project is a Socorro Citywide ADA Bus Shelter Improvement Phase One project. This provides ADA improvements to seven bus stops in Socorro, according to the city's ADA transition plan. All projects are designed to create safe connections to schools, transit places of employment. And there is information for those projects provided in the, in the backup. However, this, these are preliminary budgets, preliminary project layouts, and they are subject to change. But for the most part, the projects have a, will end up having a similar scope.
Any questions?
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia is absent. Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, discussion and action to approve the draft of the summary of rates scheduled for the city of Socorro's proposed foreign trade zone.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. We are requesting your approval on this draft of summary of rates for our proposed foreign trade zone. As you recall, city council did approve staff to submit in an application to become a grantee to the Foreign Trade Zone Board. That application is going through the process and we are expecting that to be approved in the coming months. At this time, staff would like to present a draft of the summary of rates for our proposed foreign trade zone. This summary of rates will be used to promote Socorro's upcoming FTZ. And then we can make it official once we get that designation from the FTZ board. At this time, I'd also like to invite Jose Quiñones, our in-house FTZ expert, to provide a little bit more information and answer any questions that you may have about this.
Good evening, mayor and council. Jose Quiñones, Economic Recovery Coordinator. Attached to backup was a comparison sheet of various zones throughout the region that I put there so you could get a basis of understanding of what, what the zone rates are throughout the, the country and more or less throughout the southern border. So first tier would be areas around the region here in the metro, which is El Paso and Doñana County. There's actually three foreign trade zones in the area. Those are considered, those are highlighted in yellow. And then the second tier are zones that are also on the southern border of the US. Also, you know, with Mexico, bordering Mexico, and those would be such as places such as McAllen and Yuma, Arizona. I forgot to also highlight Laredo, but they're similar in, in the way they're structured, although they're very far apart in terms of competition. So our, our closest competitors would be the existing zones in the region. And then the ones in the southern border, which is McAllen, Laredo, Yuma. There are other zones in, in the southwest such as Phoenix, Houston, but those are just so you can have an idea of what the rates are. Our rates are more competitive regionally. I recommend that you, we go with a schedule that's, right now, those fees might seem a little bit low, but I think that's a way for us to gauge and also to lure industry that we think would fit, would be a good fit in a foreign trade zone. Once we're, we're a more mature zone, then we can consider changing the rates a bit. But one thing you don't want to do is move those rates a lot within a year or two, okay? They look for stability, so when we go out there and promote it, they're looking to see how, how these rates fit into what other zones in the region are or in the southern border. Lots of these companies are multinational companies or logistics companies that have a location, not just in El Paso, but they may have a, a site in McAllen or in Tucson or Yuma per se. But if they expand, they might look at consolidating, and that happens here. We are actually looking at a company that's looking at consolidating operations in the region. And that would be a good way of using and saying, this, this is our, this is our schedule. We're ready to bring you in. Any questions?
Mr. Cruz?
Mr. Quiñones, so it looks like we're very competitive in, in the future. I'm, I'm seeing this kind of as an incubator for the meantime, as Socorro grows in the FTZ sector. But is there anything that's legally binding when we feel the need to expand or alter the, the rates with, with those potential clients?
Not at all. The city council has the power any time to change the rates. Okay, so, and when we come back and we notify this council that we have received our designation, we will receive a designation number. And the boards allows us to proceed with, to do these soft sells, that means promote the zone, but without mentioning a designation because we don't have one yet. That's the only difference. We're waiting for that grant of authority. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia is absent. Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-three, discussion and action to approve a letter of support for the city of El Paso's F Y twenty-three charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant. Grant application to design, construct and operate an electric vehicle charging infrastructure program for the El Paso region.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. We are requesting your approval for a letter of support for the city of El Paso's application to the F Y twenty-three charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant. This is a regional project that the city of El Paso is looping in Socorro on. Um, the city of, of El Paso is planning this effort and, and submitting the application. The city of Socorro has requested for electric vehicle charging station at, stations at two locations in Socorro. And we do have Omar Martinez from the city of El Paso in case you all have any questions regarding this project or, or, um, any of those locations.
I guess I have a question, mayor.
Okay. Mr. Cruz.
Have, have the two, uh, locations been identified as, uh, like have they been pinpointed?
Yes, uh, subject to change, of course, uh, but so far we've identified Rio Vista as one location and, um, a location on the Mission Trail.
Is that what else, like specific area on the Mission Trail?
Yes, uh, so far we've had conversations with some of the property owners on the Mission Trail. Uh, right now, the location that's most amenable would be, um, on a future project that is being planned on at these, uh, Sombras de Piro location, that restaurant that used to be Sombras del pasado. There's a project ongoing and I know they're going through the zoning process for that. So that's a potential, a, a good site for that. Um, that location would also tie into the proposed trail that we're submitting in the previous item that we presented for the F Y twenty-three transportation alternatives project. So if people can, um, drive their vehicle, uh, hook it up, then get on their bikes or walk the trail and visit some of our local businesses, um, our breweries, our restaurants, that would be, uh, a good merger of projects.
Mr. Reyes.
Okay, as far as, uh, when we get them, how would it work on, uh, would they be kind of like given to the city and we're gonna take care of maintenance and I guess the electricity, I should say?
Yes, we'll bring in Omar for that question.
All right.
Good evening, council. My name's Omar Martinez. My title is Grants and Strategic Initiatives Manager with the city of El Paso. I'm the equivalent, Alejandro, for the city of El Paso. And so this project is a three-way partnership between the city of El Paso, El Paso County, and El Paso Electric. This is a three-way M O U. None of the parties have adopted it yet. We expect the El Paso City Council to approve on, uh, June sixth. El Paso Commissioners Court will take it next Monday and El Paso Electric would then subsequently approve once the two units of government approved. Contingent upon that M O U, which we would submit along with the application, the ownership of all E V charging infrastructure has to remain public. So through our M O U, El Paso Electric, I'm sorry, uh, El Paso County would own sixteen charging stations and the city of El Paso would own the remaining charging stations. We are proposing a hundred and five charging stations. Now, in terms of ownership, all it is, is a, uh, owning of the infrastructure and revenues, revenue collection. The revenues are based on our agreement with the grant program through the U S Department of Transportation have to remain for maintenance, operations and expansion of the E V charging infrastructure. So, uh, this is a nineteen million dollar project. We are asking for fifteen million dollars from the federal government and El Paso Electric would provide three point seven five million dollars. So this comes, uh, pretty much free to the local taxpayers. And so ownership, in terms of ownership, yes, the city of El Paso would own the prop, the, the, what is the infrastructure that is located in Socorro. We would ask for a right-of-way conveyance to the property owners and here in Socorro, but it doesn't mean that it has to be stuck this way. It is because the application is due next month and early next month. And adding Socorro was just, uh, when we were analyzing what routes we wanted to take that would be feasible where there is demand for these E V charging infrastructure, while we determined that Socorro, uh, through the Mission Trail requires one. So it is not set in stone. It is just a proposal. We still have to get funded and then we would go back and sign M O U agreements with each property owner, including the city, including business owners along the Mission Trail to come with final agreements. Should it be your prerogative that the city of Socorro wants to own this infrastructure, similar to El Paso County owning sixteen stations? I don't think the city of, of El Paso would be opposed. We are not in here to make any money off of these charging stations. In fact, there's probably gonna be some maintenance requirements since we don't know the economics in terms of usage. We don't know if there'll be a, a burden or a gain. So hopefully that explains, uh, the scope of the project, how large it is and the, the current arrangement. Again, not, not, nothing is set in stone, including the locations. The city, uh, through the council might determine that you want additional, uh, like a different site, maybe not Rio Vista, maybe another city-owned site. Uh, we however did allocate four stations for, for Socorro. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz.
Yeah, I, I think that, that for the meantime, um, ownership should remain, uh, with, with the county, uh, at, at this time. And I think that it's, it's just added value, especially since, uh, the county has, is now the recipient of the twenty twenty-three best historic, uh, Mission Trail. Uh, and, and so that's something to be proud of. And I think that it was a smart choice and, and wise decision to place one here in Socorro and even consider our city to, to even have one of those placed here. So I, I, I'm, I'm all for it.
Happy to answer any other questions or provide additional details in case you're all interested in how we're hoping to implement it.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nebaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia is absent. Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on, recreation centers. Item number twenty-four, discussion and action on approval regarding an upcoming film project, the Film Race Borderland Edition to produce a high-quality cinematic sizzle trailer for the project to pitch to networks and production companies as a reality-based television series by T J Karim and Joe Bussar.
Good evening, mayor and council. Victor Reta, Director for Recreation and Special Events. As you all know, last year we had our first ever Ted X event, which we were hugely successful and sold out. Through that partnership, we were able to connect with Mr. Oaks from the Paso Film Commission. Through networking and hearing of the great event that we had, we were able to make connections and have, uh, featured speakers, featured speakers such as Jessica Maras, who's a well-known TV actress. And now by the luck that we have it, we have Mr. T J Karim with us today. Some of you may recognize him from hit TV shows such as Chicago Fire and Chicago Med. He's actually here in El Paso, um, relocated and is gonna share with us some really exciting news of a reality-based filmmaker's competition that he has set Socorro as the setting for.
Good evening, uh, city manager and council members. That was, that was far too kind. Um, none of you probably recognize me, so that's okay. Um, I'm gonna give you, I was told I don't have a ton of time, so I'm gonna try to go through this pretty briskly.
You want to use your video or would you like the deck?
Uh, let's start with the deck. Um, my name's T J Karim, born and raised in El Paso, Texas, on the east side or what used to be the east side, which was McCray. It's, uh, more like central now. Um, I, uh, have lived in other cities in Texas and most recently moved back during the pandemic for one reason or another to El Paso from Chicago, where I was working as a full-time actor and producer and director. Um, being back in El Paso, uh, I started to realize the amount of talent. I mean, I always knew there was talent in El Paso, but I started to realize how much people were actually trying to get accomplished through film. Um, and my passion now lies in film, although I am third generation, uh, commercial real estate. I do that to make money to do my passion projects. Uh, the Film Race is, if we can just go to the next slide, is that the easiest way to do it? So basically the Film Race is a competition that we came up with. I've got, and when I say a production company, I use that very loosely. It's four of us that started a small company and we do short films on our own and we fund them on our own and we don't have a lot of money. But we did come up with this concept and, and Mr. Joe Boozer is in Indiana where he lives, so he's not here tonight. The Film Race is a documentary-style, reality-based film competition wherein our company selects three filmmaking teams and we follow them with our behind-the-scenes crews through whatever region we're filming in and document the entire filmmaking experience. The, the primary purpose of the Film Race, and initially it was called the Indiana Film Race, um, we have now turned it into the Film Race so we could take it wherever we like. But the primary purpose was to highlight destination locations in regions that don't get seen, um, in the right light. El Paso and El Paso County being one of them specifically right now and, and most of the time. When we have major film production, it's on the border and it typically revolves around, uh, drug lords and death and/or, um, abuse. So coming back to El Paso, I found it, um, an opportunity to bring something that would shed a light on what El Paso really is, the beauty of El Paso County. And, uh, in, in doing so, uh, we started meeting and I had my, the creator, Joe Boozer, come into town and we started looking around and I started hearing things about Socorro. Um, and I've been gone for a while, so it'd been a long time since I've been out here, but I started hearing about the arts and, and all the cool things that were going on here and, um, all the hipsters that you guys are attracting out to Socorro with the, with the good work that you guys have done. I brought Mr. Joe Boozer out here. We walked in, we met with Victor, um, we drove around, we saw some really cool things that would be beautiful to shoot and we thought, maybe there's an opportunity to do one of our days of shooting in Socorro. The Film Race that we shoot here in El Paso, the primary objective is we're gonna shoot the three films. At the end of the day, we'll have three films that'll be shown at a closing ceremony in El Paso County. Um, and we will be designating these teams with locations that are chosen by El Paso County and our other partners. That being said, what it does for the, for the county and for the city of El Paso and the city of Socorro, should we shoot here, is it gives you guys, um, number one, footage that we shoot to use in your economic development to showcase destination locations in Socorro. Um, it also gives, um, the possibility, so let me back up a little bit. The main objective is for us to eventually get picked up by a network. So we ran a, a proof of concept in two thousand and eighteen on a shoestring budget, went really well. I'd like to show you a video of that. Um, and then, um, get into a little bit more, but I think if I show you the video, it'd give you kind of an overall concept of what we do. I woke up this morning. I did wake up this morning. Not. There again. I woke up this morning. Not surprised, but bittersweet. Today was just another day added to many days of defeat.
Pop is on the side of the street. We get a different lens and we get like a close-up on Cassandra of her glaring at Kalika. And then we reverse to Kalika being like, oh, fuck, and then drives away.
You guys made a sound booth out of your restaurant.
Great.
Good job.
Going out. Give him some oxygen.
After round.
No, he can't sit down before me.
Oh, L D go!
This film really moved me. Here's the thing about storytellers, whether, whether we're doing short film or whether we're doing a feature, a TV show, whatever, we gotta have something to say, right? You wanna know what I love about what you guys did? You had something to say. I don't mean to get so graphic, but like literally it inspires me, man. You had, you guys had something to say.
Nothing's gonna be the same after this.
I'm sorry. We're not coming back. Like I said I would.
All right, so that was a sizzle trailer that we put together from our proof of concept in two thousand and eighteen. We shot in Indiana. Indiana's like this. We shot it in five counties over five days, which is basically like going from Socorro to Horizon to El Paso. Um, the other parts you saw were from the home edition we did during COVID because we wanted to keep things moving along. So there were submissions made from filmmakers around the nation, sent in just for judging, um, following COVID, uh, protocol. What I would ultimately like to do is come to Socorro and find out if there is a way that we could partner with Socorro. So we're raising funds to shoot this project. I have now raised enough funds for principal photography to actually shoot the project here in El Paso County and I'm trying to raise the rest of the funds for post-production. When we finish the project, we have, um, footage of the entire race in the can. And what we particularly interested in doing for this race is putting together a high-quality cinematic sizzle reel to pitch to the networks, um, to promote our, our film project. As one of the caveats of being one of the owners of the project, we'd like to bring, when we get picked up by a major network, the project back to the Borderland region and, and shoot a high-quality production with all the necessary funds. That being said, I would like to ask Socorro to be a financial partner in us shooting in Socorro County or in Socorro, the city of Socorro. Um, and typically what we've done is we've put together a proposal for cities and counties. We're working with the county of El Paso, work on the city of El Paso as well. So what we do is we put together a proposal that, that shows what we can give in return that can be used for economic development, um, based on, um, you all providing some financial assistance to us. The ultimate goal would be able to ask the city of Socorro for five thousand dollars to help us achieve our goal to shoot the Film Race, uh, in September. That being said, when we come and shoot in Socorro, what I'd like to do is we give each film team two locations per day. They have to use one of the locations to shoot their film in and, uh, the other one is optional, but we would spend the entire day with the three teams filming in Socorro and with the behind-the-scenes crews following them filming in Socorro. So at the end of the day, what we could offer in exchange, for example, would be all of the B-roll that we shoot of us and our team and, uh, the film team shooting in Socorro. Um, and also highlighting the destinations and locations that you pick, such as the Mission and anything along the Mission Trail that you guys choose for us to shoot at. There's a ton of information and I don't wanna take up too much of your time this evening, but I would like to ask if you guys have any questions, um, with also the ability to come back, uh, at a future meeting in the next month or so, um, to either answer any questions or once I've delivered a proposal to find out if it's something that the city of Socorro would like to be involved in.
Mr. Cruz.
I have a question for staff. What, what would be the, uh, the funding source? I know they disclosed an amount of, of five thousand.
So that would be up to council. Typically, we aren't budgeted to do any kind of extra events. So every time we have like the binational tourism convention or any kind of additional T M L meetings, those come out of the general fund if they're not already budgeted for in the M and O.
Uh, one thing I would like to mention also, just real quick, is, is some of the things that Victor and I have talked about also, um, is we do have, um, being that it's a reality-based show, our team has the ability to pick the three teams that compete. We would be very interested to find out if there's a possibility that one of the teams could be from Socorro. I know that we talked about getting one of the teams together from the high school, from their film department to put together a submission, uh, for the Film Race. Uh, and as you know, I can't make any promises, obviously, but we would do our best to, and I, and I know Socorro's had films shot here before, so I'm not, I'm not, um, saying that we'd be the first. we'd be the first film project, but on the low end, this will bring a fun um, event to Socorro. You'll end up with um, footage that you can use for your economic development, which doesn't come cheap anyway. And then on the high end, um, Socorro could be seen in these three films as well as in the reality-based TV series nationwide or worldwide. So there's, there's the possibility of it, um, but again, no, no guarantees.
Ms. LeFey?
I'm sorry, what was the financial impact? What was, what was the cost?
Uh, five thousand dollars is what we're requesting.
Um, if council wishes, we can do a budget amendment if there's not enough money in the line item um, in our next budget amendment.
Well, one of the things also I would just put out there is, is um, we're set to shoot the race September ninth through the sixteenth. Um, we have enough to shoot the film race here, so we're, we're still seeking money to finish with our post-production work. Um, so if budget comes, I don't know when your fiscal year ends, but if it's in September, if it runs into the next year, it can also be from the following year's budget, if that helps.
Correct, so if it, I'm sorry, so if it's next fiscal year, we can budget for it during our budget workshop.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia Absent, Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Beautiful city, by the way, we can't wait to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to planning and zoning, item number twenty-five, discussion and action approving resolution seven fifty-one, a subdivision replat to create two lots from one lot with a variance to allow a smaller lot size with a R1 single-family residential. Zoning and being block six, block sixteen, lot six, Bowman Estates, number three, located at one one three five one Hovey Drive, Socorro, Texas.
Thank you. The request is for approval of a subdivision replat to create two lots from one lot with a variance to allow for a small, smaller lot with the R1 single-family residential zoning. The zoning currently is R1, the size of the lot is twenty-six thousand two hundred and forty-seven square feet. It is residential, it currently has two um, residential homes on the single lot. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval. Planning and zoning commission voted to approve the request for the subdivision replat with the variance to allow for a smaller lot size uh, at their May second planning and zoning commission meeting. The lot is in the Bowman Estates subdivision, it is just uh, north of the railroad tracks and Bowman. It is surrounded by single-family residential and some um, C1 zoning. These are pictures of the property. You can uh, kind of, well, you can see the property uh, at the front of the lot and at the bottom picture, not very well make out the, the property in the back. But the aerial photograph does uh, show the proximity, on the next slide, the proximity of the two uh, the two homes. The next slide shows the original plat for Bowman Estates Unit Three, the location of the lot within that subdivision. And then the next slide is what is being proposed, Soria subdivision with two lots, the lot to the front and the lot to the rear, access to the rear being uh, from that small panhandle that you see at the top of the, of the lots. With that, staff can answer any questions that you might have?
Mayor.
Josie Alavos.
If I, if I'm looking at what you presented correctly, you're stating there's already three homes on one lot?
No, there are two homes on one lot.
And they're the ones that are uh, very close to each other, correct?
Can we go back to the era? There's the one, one uh, single-family home at the front of the lot and then to the back left is the second home.
Okay, I, okay, I, I see that, okay, I see that now. Um, and then there are, what is it, a warehouse or?
It's just a storage.
A stor- storages, okay. And then they're dividing it, they're dividing it uh, right down the middle, if you're looking at the dirt road, straight, well, no, down the middle on half and half, correct?
Not quite half and half, which is why they are requesting the variance. The uh, larger lot would be uh, seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty uh, one square feet, the smaller lot would be eight thousand three hundred and sixteen square feet.
And it would look exactly how the divi- division is here on this, this uh?
This plat, yes, that is what they're requesting.
And the reason they're doing this is because they're not in compliance?
No, from what I understand, and the applicant apologizes for not being able to be here, they have uh, they were a, a family uh, and decided to go in together to buy the lot. They said they purchased the lot approximately back in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, their intention had always been to build the two lots, uh, to build the two homes. There was already a foundation for the, for the lot on the front of the house, for the front house. And then just as time went on, uh, they uh, did not get to do that. The uh, owner of the lot is listed as Teresa de la, Teresa Soria, Mrs. Teresa de la Cruz. And uh, the property in the back is being, is owned uh, by her nephew. And they, she would just like to formalize the, what has always been just an agreement between, between the family.
And so the, the house in the, I'm technically saying, in the back where the cul-de-sac does not exist, that looks like a dirt road, the, it, that won't impede, or is he coming in through the cul-de-sac?
It is coming in through the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
That is where they're proposing the access.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that they're, because there's, is that a dirt road in the back?
Canal.
It's a canal, okay. I just wanna make sure they're not landlocked, uh, and they had a way of coming in. Those were my questions, thank you.
Mr. Cruz.
So ju- just for the formality of things, the easement to the back entrance is gonna be owned by, by the owner and the, with the uh, the brown roof?
It's not an easement, it's actually the shape of the lot. So that, that lot is a panhandle lot.
The reason.
It's that shape.
The reason I ask is because Socorro, a lot of properties that are landlocked right now, this is why they got landlocked, is because families started saying, hey, you know what, you can use my little uh, entryway here to get to your property and then, and then later on when um, when there was time to, you know, there was arguments and stuff like that, why, who owns it ultimately?
Yeah, they're avoiding that by specifically laying out that as its own lot.
So they'll be setting some sort of barrier there?
There is already a fence.
It's a fence?
Well, I don't know, I don't think you can see it from the aerial, the photographs are not very clear, um, there's a fence.
Okay.
Last question. I know they talked about it at the, the plane on zoning, in the, back to the entrance, there, it's wide enough for an emergency vehicle to get to the, to the back home, right?
Yes, the width of the driveway is, I wrote it down, because I was going to forget, fourteen and a half feet.
Okay.
Emergency access.
Fourteen and a half, fourteen and a half, thirteen? Does that sound right? Wait, they, they would, the emergency vehicle would need thirteen?
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
With the recommendations that uh, planning and zoning uh, set forth.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia Absent, Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopes.
Yes.
Item number twenty-six, discussion and action to approve waiver for excavation permit fee for the Lower Valley Water District for Orange Beach Court.
Thank you, the Lower Valley Water District has submitted an excavation permit for the Orange Beach Court nine-inch water distribution system project. The project includes a total of uh, eighteen hundred and seventy-two square feet for the excavation work. The city of Socorro has assessed a fee of seven thousand twenty dollars for the permit. The Lower Valley Water District is requesting a waiver of this fee, and I understand it has been um, of the purview of the, the city council to waive that fee if it's in the benefit of the city of Socorro and, and the community. Mr. Flores and Mr. Grijalva are here from the Lower Valley Water District to answer any questions that, that you might have. Questions?
Mayor.
The main question that I have is, is what, what's the purpose of the, of the request to waive?
To waive the fee, the seven thousand that's required for the excavation work?
Yeah, but what, what's the reason behind the request to waive the fee?
That, any additional, what, my understanding, and I will uh, allow Mr. Flores and Mr. Grijalva to correct me if I'm wrong, but just to allow them to then be able to put those funds back into other projects that would allow them to uh, extend the water and so, lines to other parts of the community. These are their funds that they're using, right?
Mayor.
Ms. Villa Lopes. Council, council, please keep in mind that this uh, Lower Valley Water is working diligently with, I'm not sure how many communities already in Socorro uh, that ha- don't have the services. Uh, Orange Beach has been fighting for this uh, for these services for quite some time. And I would like for you to consider waiving the fee because it, that amount will go into another district that we have out there, or another subdivision that we have out there that uh, are pending funds because this Lower Valley Water does not have the full funds yet. And so by doing this, we're helping out our community. And you guys know we have people who have lived in their community for about forty, thirty years and don't have services, but soon will, because they're part of a larger project that the Lower Valley has set forth in our community of Socorro. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to speak on this side?
What's happened uh, throughout the county is, when the water district was first created, we had a lot of what they called Colonia project money. And what the funders, the financing uh, uh, agencies were doing at the time, were only allowing the water district to fund what was inside the Colonia. So a lot of people were neglected, honestly, uh, and not provided first-time water or sewer service because they weren't in a Colonia. What we're doing now as of the last five years is going back uh, to these places. And we cannot get funding from other agencies because the cost per connection is too high. Uh, uh, for instance, in, in Orange Beach, uh, the cost per connection would be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars per connection, which obviously we're not, we're gonna recoup any profit for the next twenty, thirty years. And what we're doing as a water district is uh, doing the project in-house to save money. We're budgeting out of our capital improvement funding every year, so every year there's money that goes to these projects. They're listed on our website and on the website will say what stage we're in in funding the actual project. Uh, there is, I'd like to say there's about ten to twelve, just in the city of Socorro alone, that we have to address that are one-offs. Uh, in other words, there's one house over here that got left out, there's three over here that got left out. And we're trying to accommodate those people because they're paying taxes and they are, uh, in all intents and purposes, deserve to be our customers, uh, because they've been paying taxes for thirty years to the water district. Uh, so that's why we're, we're doing this. And the more money we save, the more money we're able to put back into these projects. We put them back into a pool, not necessarily something that's earmarked for Socorro, obviously we, we, we can't do it, but we know that the funding cycle that we go through, which starts every October, uh, we can take some of that CIP money and put it right back into more projects. And that's how we're working it.
Mr. Cruz.
So as much as I like working with Lower Valley Water and its staff, I, I have to be very upfront and direct when I say that it's very difficult to waive a fee. I know last year we waived a forty thousand dollar fee. I would have liked to have seen forty thousand dollars be injected back into the committee of Socorro. I don't know that that ever happened, it's very hard to say that. I don't think that you guys injected forty grand worth of projects into Socorro because of the, the, the fee that we waived, to be honest, and, and you just said it. We've had businesses and other folks that have come and they've requested the, the, the fee to be waived, but I feel that because uh, of what's written, and again, it's in black and white, the city of Socorro does have a, a, a fee schedule that we have to follow. I don't like breaking the rules. Um, I know at times we can, we can make exceptions and, and, and things like that, of that nature, but I know that at the end of the day, we're, we're, we're going to hear, we're gonna hear it from the community who, who we have denied permits from in the past, but again, that's, that's only my, my observation and, and me speaking as an individual on the table. Um, like you mentioned, are the seven thousand dollars gonna be injected back directly into the city of Socorro? That's, that's an unknown. The forty thousand that was waived last year, that's also an unknown.
Well, it, it's actually no, uh, we finished uh, the Varela project, which is at least uh, three hundred thousand dollars worth of work that we did in-house, and uh, you contributed to that waiver. So that money was uh, it somehow attributed back to Socorro. Uh, Orange Beach will be just as expensive, we've not only got to provide water for them, but sewer service as well. So the sewer service is a lot more expensive than the water service. And again, uh, we're gonna ask for a waiver on the sewer once we're ready for it, and you know you will recoup that investment in the uh, the infrastructure that we provided. Plus, the property values actually come up higher, so that in your roles with the central appraisal district, you'll probably have a, a higher uh, bracket of taxpayer for those uh, with the infrastructure already in.
Yeah, then.
That's the best I can say, it's, it's uh, the money doesn't go from one to the other and say, this is Socorro, this goes to Socorro.
Right.
Can't do that, but the money does go to our capital improvement projects of which Socorro is one of the highest priorities.
That's true, but you also pick up new customers along the way when you do provide water services and it's, 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 it's at the, it's the city's obligation to be able to provide those utilities when, when, when feasible. But a- again, it, you guys provide a service to us, we're, we're the customer at the end of the day. I, I just, I don't feel that the continuation of waiving fees is, is, is um, we don't see our return of investment to the, to the, you know, to the full benefit is what I'm trying to get at, unless Lower Valley Water can present a chart here uh, and say, hey, you've waived X amount of fees and this is how much money we've injected upon waiving these fees back into community. I haven't seen that yet, so I, 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 that's where I sit right now.
Okay, um, you can table the, the item and we can provide a spreadsheet showing what the cost savings has been and attributed to the projects that we've done in Socorro specifically uh, at a later date. We're going to do the project anyway and we'll pay whatever fee needs to be paid to get the project done. And that's our responsibility, not, not yours.
Is this gonna delay the item? The, is this gonna delay the construction?
No, uh, we're targeted to start no matter what. In fact, our board motion is next Thursday, I, I believe, for that project. In fact, our board motion is next Thursday, I believe, for that project.
Ms. Villalobos?
Mr. Cruz has a point, but I want Mr. Cruz and everyone else to hear this. How many times did other cities' monies were thrown in that pool and were utilized for I think $7,000 is not a lot. I think waiving fees to help our constituents get faster service, or get the service that they need, or get more, because I don't know if you've been to the meetings where these projects are going on. This is the first time that I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Grijalva, that we have such a large amount of Socorro residents finally getting their services. I don't think, I don't think this has been done before in this magnitude. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, we really need to, this is for the, this is for the constituents, it really is. If they turn around and hear for $7,000, their project was halted, and we didn't do anything to help them, or, you know, or they're short and they have to wait another year, or another two years, or whatever the case might be, I just think we need to work with the Lower Valley Water, because they're doing, if you've gone to their meetings, they're doing phenomenal to help the constituents that have sat there with septic tanks that are backed up, have sat there with no water, or no sewer, or et cetera, et cetera. We need to sit down, if you haven't already, sit down with the Lower Valley Water and look at the magnitude of projects that they have going on. On their website, you can see how much they're funded already in our district, I mean, in our city, how many of them have been funded, or what, what status is, what's the status, how many, you know, if they're 80%, 70% funded. And I think the, I think soon, some of these projects will have, hopefully, they have the grants that we're waiting, or the Lower Valley Water is waiting on, so that they can, so they can have a start date in the future, which is probably by next year. And this is just a little recap of what I've heard and what I've seen and what I've sat down with Mr. Grijalva and his staff. You know, in the past, I don't know, two months, Mr. Grijalva, we've met a couple of times regarding these projects. So again, we need to partner up. It's, I don't think it's, it's much to ask and finally get these projects going, and that we're, because we're not the only city, they have other cities, and what if they start their projects, because they're, you know, they understood the magnitude of partnering up. So, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia-Sapsen, Rudy Cruz.
Nope.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, city manager, item number 27, discussion and action to approve the purchase of 1 2023 Ford F-150 truck for parks and public works from Casa Ford in the amount of $46,425.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good evening, mayor and council. This item is requesting approval to purchase of a 1 2023 Ford F-150 in the amount of $46,425. This funding will come out of the vehicle allocation left over from the Public Works Department and the animal control vehicle purchase back in November. Procurement has been met through Region 19, contract number 197325. And if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Mayor.
Ms. Villalobos?
I'm sorry, Ms. Rodarte, I did not hear, where is the budget coming from? I apologize.
For the vehicles that we had allocated through the budget.
So, so it's in our 202023 budget?
Yes, ma'am. We allocated funding for vehicles.
And we have, we've already voted on this previously, we're just bringing forth what you're getting for what amount?
So, the budget was approved through our budget workshop?
Yes, ma'am.
And right now, it's coming to you, because we're wanting to make a purchase, and it exceeds the $25,000.
I see, got you, okay, all righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia-Sapsen, Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Do we have anything on items 28, 29, or 30? None? Do we have a motion to delete items 28, 29, or 30?
Motion to delete items 28, 29, and 30.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia-Sapsen, Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Would you like to make a?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia-Sapsen, Rudy Cruz, and Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Meeting adjourns at 7:31 PM.